Gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf. Committee of the whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, even though our agenda says 2022. Look at that.
It's crazy.
It is 6:30 PM. We did not have a meeting yesterday because we were observing New Year's Day and New Year's Eve. So, thank you all for being here. We do have a presentation to kick things off. For that, we welcome our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt, and our City Engineer, Brent Morlock. Gentlemen, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have in front of you here today is in the red document where it says, "Chapter 2, Sewer Use and Service." That is our existing ordinance. And Brent has lined them out. And then the other document, which has the ordinance number in front of it, is a draft ordinance that we're presenting to you tonight just for you to review. It's a draft ordinance that we expect to have the first reading at the next council cycle. This ordinance is amending Title VIII, Chapter 2, entitled Sewer Use and Sewer Service. Brent has been working with Dan Meyer, the wastewater treatment plant operator for Davenport, as these changes primarily address pretreatment and local limits on what is discharged into our sanitary sewer system. And it's part of the MPES permit requirement for the plant. It's important to note that there is no changes into sewer connection fees in this ordinance, proposed ordinance change, nor the way we calculate how your sewer is built. And I'm going to turn it over to Brent to talk about the ordinance changes in more detail.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. The reason you have such thick packets is essentially what we're going to do is reformat most of the ordinance. So if you dig through the red, you'll see two-thirds of that ordinance is being lined out. A lot of that stuff, so abbreviations, definitions, things like that, we're just cleaning up and making sure we match what's required by our 2080 agreement. So with our revised agreement in 2019, all the joint-use cities agreed that we will have the exact same industrial sections of our ordinance. Now, we have one single sewer ordinance, but it includes anything for industry. And then it also contains just our collection system. So anything with our collection system that's unique to Bettendorf, nothing's changing in that. It might be getting moved around so that way the sections make sense. But as Brian said, nothing to do with connection fees, rates, specifications, things like that. None of that's being changed. The main portions that are are actually the articles in the back section of the ordinance. Articles B, C, and D were all specific to items that are controlled by the wastewater treatment plant. So that's, as Brian said, pretreatment. That was a big one. There was a big adjustment to that earlier this year that Dan's been making adjustments to. Really doesn't affect much for us because we don't have a lot of industrial users. But that's making sure that any new industrial users, if they did come to Bettendorf, are complying with all the pretreatment requirements. Local limits, basically, that's specific sections of specific watersheds. The state puts different limits for how much you can have in your effluent that's leaving the treatment plant. And since we all go to the same sewer, we all need to be under the same ordinance. So those three sections are getting updated. Everything else, just doing a little cleanup and reorganizing so that way all four of our city's ordinances, because we do, like I said, all co-share with the joint use, that everybody's looks materially similar. That way, future changes are a little easier to make. The formatting had not been updated in quite a while. So that's why essentially the whole ordinance is getting reformatted. But really, the essence of it is not changing when it comes to our collection system.
This is consistent with that 2019 agreement and all of the stuff that we've been talking about this year relative to the Joint Sewer Committee, then?
Yes.
Okay. Questions? Yes. Bill?
Brent and Brian, will this take any of our existing businesses out of compliance with having to comply with these new regulations?
It will not, no. The only updates in terms of the pretreatment, and so specifically for industrial, would be for new users. If they were built under a pre-existing condition, they're grandfathered in.
Okay, and there have been discussions in the past about adjusting our sewer connection fees. They've been the same for probably 25, 30 years. Was there any discussion regarding that during this process?
We have not had any specific to this ordinance section because we wanted to get the industrial brought up. But we have been talking about that. And I think that was something we were probably going to be looking at as we headed into budgets because it could kind of play into what our potential rate increases might be and maybe being able to offset some of those by increasing some of those costs.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. To follow up on the fees there, how do our fees compare with neighboring cities such as Davenport or Eldridge?
Jason, you might be able to better answer. I do know we are less the, our, per 100 CCF, the 100 cubic centimeter. We are lower than Davenport's. The smaller cities, Riverdale's is really hard to tell. They haven't raised theirs, I think, in almost 20 or 25 years. So they're in the process of doing that. Eldridge, I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure we're lower than Leclerc as well with all the lift stations and collection improvements that they've had to make.
Yeah, I can't speak to some of the smaller neighbors, but off the top of my head, I can recall the 38 cities that we often compare ourselves to, those with populations of 10,000 or more across the state. We have probably the or maybe the second lowest sewer rate in the state among those 38 cities.
Other questions? Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. If you have, go ahead and read them, obviously. If you have further questions, contact either one of them. And we'll look forward to another discussion or a quick presentation before we put this up for vote at the next meeting. Mr. Blaine?
Just for the council's memory, we did talk about, after the McClure study, that in our comprehensive plan, the capital expenditures will start to rise in terms of the sewer improvements that we need for that northern tier of the city. So you'll see some planned increases in the sewer rate when we get into the budget. I don't think that's anything you don't remember, but just as a reminder, when we talk about being the lower rate, we're going to, we're still, we think we're going to be lower, but we are going to increase those fees to accomplish what we want to get done in that northern tier of the city.
Did that McClure study anticipate raising sewer connection fees to maybe offset some of those increases?
It did offer it as a possible solution, but it did not factor it into their economic analysis.
Okay. It'd be nice if we could do that prior to budget.
We will certainly, in the discussion of the budget, have that, have that ready for you to look at. I think to the point Brent's making, I mean, what you'd have to, what you'd have to change that per-connection fee to pursuant that major increase in the fees, I don't know that it's going to get you a one-for-one, Bill. I mean, I think-
Yeah, if we could offset a portion of it.
I think that's, yeah, we agree with that. We agree with that.
The only other thing I'd like to ask is that we do, we are on a bit of a time constraint. So we would ask, if possible, if everyone's okay that maybe we consider combining the second and third readings when we get to that point. So the, Dan was a little behind getting this out to everybody and now it took a while to reformat for us. So they've been able to, they issue annual permits for everyone. They have to get them out before the end of the year. DNR was okay with issuing permits before we got this done, but just would ask that we get it done as soon as we can.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, our Community Development Director, Mark Hunt, headed to the center of the floor for a couple of projects on our consent agenda, items I and J for our regular meeting this evening. Welcome, Mark.
Thanks, Your Honor. Let me just pull the slides up here.
I think Mark has a really attractive suit on this evening, Your Honor. I just thought I'd point that out.
Is that because he has a white shirt on, sir?
No.
Oh.
My suit is a little tighter after the holidays.
Well, that's all of us.
At least me, too. Yeah, they usually shrink over the holidays.
If I may, Your Honor, I do have a couple cases to present. Case 22075, Pierce subdivision. It's a site development plan. There is a related plat as well. And so you kind of get the feel for that as I go through the presentation. That's included, that plat is included in your consent agenda as well. Just to orient you, we're out on the kind of far reaches of State Street where, between State Street and Valley Drive here, the highlighted parcel is the parcel in question. It's been, you know, it's been agricultural use for some time, probably forever, to be honest with you. Just south of Valley View Drive. The applicant is Scott Pierce of Blue Water Group. We have a final plat. I mentioned that, as well as a site development plan. I'll kind of go back and forth between the two here. Ag use is mentioned. The plat will divide this parcel into four lots, three developable and one will be for stormwater detention. And the proposed uses are industrial contractor condos, so not really storage. It kind of looks like storage buildings, but these aren't your convenience storage-type buildings. They're actually contractor condos with bathrooms and office space in them as well. So they do have some jobs related to them. And then Mr. Pierce does have an industrial use for his headquarters of his, I think, as a pool spot company. Future land use and zoning, nothing surprising here. We're an industrial classification for both the future land use and the zoning. And the proposed use matches up with both of those. Got some floodplain and some floodway. You will see that floodway is kind of the zebra striped hash that is on the perimeter of property. The light teal or light blue does represent the floodplain. So nearly all of the properties in the floodway, except for the floodplain, excuse me, except for just the middle here. So they will have to do our, meet our two feet above base flood elevation for anything they build. So here's that primary plat, just shows the lots. And this right-of-way here, hopefully it's more visible on your screen. We took a wait-and-see approach with this one on sidewalks. We usually don't do sidewalks in industrial areas, but because this is so close to a residential area, we do have the area to put those in. They would be put in at a later date if we chose to go that route. Doesn't really make any sense until or if this road someday connects all the way down to State Street. That might be something we want to contemplate. If it just becomes a cul-de-sac and never develops, then probably having sidewalks doesn't make much sense. And the stormwater outlot is this kind of narrow rectangle here. So three developable lots in a row and the rear would be where the stormwater would be detained. Our final plat, not much difference. We do show the access easement here over across these lots and access easements around this lot as well. Here's an overall concept plan. So the only things that are being contemplated from a site development plan are just two contractor condos and the offices for Mr. Pierce. Those contractor condos are here and the offices for Mr. Pierce are down here. You see other buildings and potential development of larger contractor condos. If that market does develop, he would then come back for a full site development plan on those. He is just showing us a concept here. We'll get you a more specific site plan in just a second. And so there is, there's your specific site plan for what's being proposed right now. It's just the two contractor condos. I'm sorry, I misspoke. There is no, the headquarters building is not on here yet. That will come in a future phase. But it does show, you know, those buildings would be out of the floodway. They'd be set back appropriately from Valley Drive. They do have their own individual parking. These are designed to be like van-accessible, truck-accessible type contractor condos. I'll give you some elevations here in a second. We do have a turnaround at the end of the lane for fire use since we don't have full access through the lots yet. We will require that turnaround. And then we do have these drivelines here as well. There will be some vegetation that's required as part of the landscape plan as well. Fairly minimal. Fairly plain contractor condos. You have the overhead doors here, the man doors on the front. And basically, your elevations are kind of a pole barn style building. And as I did mention, these are truly contractor condos, not convenience storage. One of the best ways to tell that is you have the bathrooms built in here. So they do have the bathroom facilities for a person that's running a business. We do recommend approval at a staff level with a couple of conditions you see there in front of you. This comment letter from FEMA is just an extra level of protection when we have development this close to the floodway and the floodplain. We can get a comment letter from FEMA. It just gives us a little better feel for where FEMA is at. It's an extra step, certainly not required, but we like to have that in the file and FEMA is willing to provide that. The Planning Commission did also recommend both cases, the plat and the site plan, for approval 6O.
All right, questions for Mark on this one? Bill?
I see we have plotted some right-of-way for Valley View. Was there a discussion about if that is put in, people would be using Valley View? That is not a very highly improved road as a cut-through to get to the north? I'm just wondering if that was consideration during the discussions at staff level?
Yeah, I guess we talked about it. We talked about more of the benefit. To answer your question, yes, first of all. We did see some benefit to having trucks not transit Valley Drive and be able to get them down onto State Street more readily. So that's a benefit that we saw. I think you're right. People may start using it as a cut-through to balance those out against each other. I understand the concern.
Okay. That'd be something to keep in mind if you decide to improve this section of Valley View between State and Valley Drive. I just think it's human nature. People take the shortest direction.
Yeah, like Fennel Road, that's a pretty common trick is to go down to Fennel Road and to get on State Street now. I do it myself. You know, that really isn't contemplated now. I would tell you just from speaking with some related landowners, I don't know how interested they are in that development occurring anytime soon. But it is, you know, we're thinking about the future as well.
Other questions?
And just, Your Honor, to Bill's point, Valley View today is a seal-coat street. And we've had it sitting out there in the CIP for improvement for a long, long time. But it doesn't have significant volume today. At some point in time, it's got to get improved and that basis and has to have curb and gutter. But it just, it doesn't make sense today. But it would make sense, long-term, to your point, Bill, if this were to go through to make that improvement either at the same time or simultaneous or prior to that going all the way through. But based on the current landowner circumstance, I don't see this happening to the south anytime. Maybe in our lifetimes.
Other questions? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. When you, when you consider approving whatever project it is, do you shy away from approving a business that would have a lot of heavy trucks and things since its Valley Drive is the only access at this point?
I think that was a point of discussion that came up through the planning and zoning process. And we currently have Valley Drive zoned with a lot of industrial uses on it. So those uses are allowed and those uses do contemplate trucks. I think that puts the focus back on the city. If we're going to zone it for industrial use and then we're going to have roads that serve those industrial areas, do we need to look at how we manage those roads going forward in the CIP year repairs and those things? You know, it's an allowed use that it contemplates that volume and that type of vehicle traffic. So that will probably put some pressure on Valley Drive and might be something we have to approach through a CIP in the future.
Ideally, obviously, traffic, we won't go down to State.
Yeah, that, again, you know, in a perfect world, maybe. Anywhere you're at, in a perfect world, you would have all the truck traffic coming up from State Street onto this connection. This is completely, you know, in the future. No guarantee that this occurs.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do you think maybe we're at a point to where a traffic study would be a helpful tool in, as we approve more and more? Because that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think the internal policy we've had is that's at the discretion of the city engineer. And I don't think he required one in this one. I wasn't at P&amp;Z meeting for this particular case. I was on vacation with my kids. But I do think Brent looked at it and he didn't require it. If I'm mistaken, Brent, you can correct me.
Yeah, we're from a, I guess if we're talking traffic study, I don't know, Alderman, Baden, if you're talking more where access should be, you know, in this case, it has to come off Valley Drive. Otherwise, the parcel is landlocked. So we have no choice but to allow it. But I think more to Alderman Adamson's comment that Valley Drive is obviously seeing an increase in traffic and maybe a full reconstruction is something that we do need to start planning for. The white topping that's out there is holding on pretty well. We've got some sections that are starting to show some age. But altogether, you've probably got anywhere from nine to 14 inches of pavement out there. Now, it might be concrete, asphalt, brick. I think the bigger drawback is the narrowness. You know, if you've got truck traffic out, ideally, we'd like to have that thing at least 31 feet wide. And we don't have that right now. So I don't think, in terms of a traffic impact study, that that would really do us any good for any of these sites unless something really large came. But the CIP planning component of it is something we definitely need to start putting, at a minimum, put a price to it and get it in there to see where it might fit.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we have adequate right-of-way to eventually improve Valley Drive?
I'm fairly certain we do. I could check on it here, but being an old state highway, I'm sure it's at least 66 feet wide, which would be plenty. You know, especially for a 31-foot. Our residential streets are only a 52 or now 53-foot right-of-way.
All right, other questions?
Your Honor, I have a quick question.
Yes, please, Lisa.
That piece of sidewalk, I don't know, Mark could refresh my memory. Was that tied in on somebody's property? And the reason I'm asking that is, Deck, or we had the piece of sidewalk that we dealt with on Kendallworth, you know, how that was kind of put in by a developer or designated, but then nobody knew who's taking care of it? I'm not wanting that to be happening on this. So I don't know. I didn't quite catch what Mark was saying with that sliver.
Oh, I think I-
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Mark, do you want that or I?
Yeah, I think I understand the question. I don't have the history on the piece of ground you're talking about. But on this project, what we've decided is it's an industrial area. We typically do not require sidewalks. But because there is this kind of natural connectivity to the neighborhood, to the northeast, northwest, I guess, we thought we might look at that in the future and maybe do an assessment waiver. It's just still too early to tell. We don't have this true connectivity. So we're not requiring sidewalks at the moment.
Yeah, I think the piece that Alderman Brown might have been talking about, we've got these handful of sidewalks that run down side yards. And those are the ones that we seem to be having problems with that were put in 20, 30, 40 years ago because a school was potentially talked about in the neighborhood. And that's definitely something we're not encouraging any longer and would not be the case here.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is that really necessary to be doing that? Or is one of those businesses going to be stuck with a mess down the road? So that's, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, so if sidewalks were put in, Lisa, it would be in the right-of-way. So all Mark's making sure is that the developer will have to provide the proper assessment waiver in the event that they do decide to get put in 10, 15 years down the road.
Okay, okay.
Anything else on this item? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that consent item I remain on tonight's agenda for consideration.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up here in just a few minutes, literally. Let's move to consent item J. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Case 22095 is at 2306, 56th Avenue West. It is a site development plan only. You've already had the plat come before the city council. Here's the final plat, lots one and two of Geepin's 56th Avenue Development. You might remember on Lot 1, there was a new dentist's office put in in the last year. They just are getting underway, actually, with serving customers. The proposed uses will be financial services and medical offices. So you'll have two C2-approved businesses coming into this area. Access is shown to Lot 1 of Geepin's 56th Avenue coming off 18th Street. And then you also have the 56th Avenue West entrance here. Here's the two new proposed buildings. I think the smaller one is financial services and the larger one is the medical offices. You know, nothing to really see here. We have C2 zoning and commercial future land use. And these are both the type of uses that are allowed in those districts. So fairly, very easily analysis there. Just a little bit on the site development plan. We've got some setbacks from the stream bank. We're meeting those. We've got a scream dumpster location. Sidewalks are already in place. We've got access established. And plenty of parking spaces are actually a little bit overparked by seven, 60 parking spaces required. 53 required, 60 provided. And there's some nice service walk so for connectivity for people walking, maybe back and forth between the dentist's office to get over here to this office. This might happen because you have two medical offices. You'll be able to do both appointments and walk the site, which we like to see as planners. Some nice landscaping and stormwater controls are put in place. It's got a pretty high tree count and you see them represented here. I believe there's regional stormwater detention already, if I'm not mistaken. That was part of a nearby development. There's your elevations of the buildings. A lot of glass, kind of a brown brick facade. We did have a positive staff review and a positive recommendation 6O at the last Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions for Mark?
Bill? And this is not at the stage of plan review yet, but it appears that the building is very close to the westerly property line. And it appears there are significant openings in that wall. That may be something that wants to get looked at very closely.
Yeah, and I did have a bullet point here. I didn't say it specifically, but the applicant is willing to install additional vegetation and screening north of the building. And that might help. If you're talking about the neighborhood, I saw what I think you're mentioning to the north. Is that your- Is that your?
No, I'm talking about the west property line. Building is very close.
Oh, yeah.
And you have a lot of openings, windows and doors in that side, so it'd be something to keep close eye on during the plan review stage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, understood. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's consent agenda as item J.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's take a look at our consent agenda items, those that are not, we have not discussed already. I will note that Corey Satterfield is here. Corey, thanks for being here. Appreciate you stepping up and agreeing to join the team. Check's in the mail. Voluntarism alive and well, so thank you for that. He is on consent agenda as item M. Is there any other particular item? Yes, Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. D, David, as in David. Computer aided dispatch for a bus. Don't they drive a route?
Mr. Schmidt? Would you like to help us out?
So the software that we are purchasing is a replacement of our Translok software right now. It's, we did a joint purchase with the city of Davenport. The CAD AVL system allows, it has a module in the bus. Right now, our drivers are actually handwriting down how many drivers get on, where they're going, and what have you. There'll be a module inside the bus that will actually track the riderships, where they're coming from. It'll be easier for us to create reports and actually determine where are the majority of our ridership is coming from and at what times. The AVL system is the automatic vehicle system that tracks the vehicles on a GPS system. And then we actually have TVs inside the operations room so that we can track the buses. They'll also be able to, users of our bus system will be able to download an app onto their phones, and then they'll be able to track a bus on a particular route and know approximately what time, plus or minus two minutes, that bus will arrive.
The citizen could do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other consent agenda items? Any particular council member would like to discuss or ask a question about it this time? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will take up those items. Is there anything on operations anybody wants to ask a question about? We have two public hearings on first readings, but the other items you've seen before. All right, and let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait a moment.
Stand adjourned.
Does anybody need to take a quick little break, a little five minute? Okay, we'll go a couple minutes and we'll start, so those of you who are here for our seven o'clock. All right. Thank you, sir. We're up and rolling. Welcome to the City of Betendorf City Council meeting. Today is January the third, twenty twenty-three. Welcome. We're a couple minutes late because we had our committee of the whole meeting that went today at six-thirty instead of yesterday in observance of New Year's Day. So, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Great, thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please stay standing for the invocation thereafter given by Betendorf Police Chaplain and Reverend of Lord's Catholic Church, Father Jason Crossen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father.
Good gracious God, as we begin a new year, we ask your blessings upon all of us gathered here, especially all of our leaders, all of our public servants, and especially, of course, all of our citizens. We ask for your kindness and graciousness as we embark this new year. Continue to give us your guidance and wisdom in all the things we do, that all of our judgments and all of our decisions may be guided by your love and commitment for the people that we serve, and we ask that you bless us in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Always a pleasure. We do have two proclamations tonight that I'll deliver from the center of the room. We start with a Martin Luther King Day proclamation.
All right, we have a proclamation from the Office of the Mary. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in nineteen ninety-four designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service and charged the Americor with leading this effort. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas service projects are being organized by a wide range of nonprofit and community organizations, educational institutions, public agencies, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation to meet important community needs. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of City of Betendorf, do hereby proclaim January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service in the Betendorf community, and I call upon all of our citizens to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Junior Day and throughout the year.
Hear.
Chief, Maggie, if you would come up, we're going to do a proclamation on Human Trafficking Awareness Month. This is Maggie Tinsman, former Iowa State Senator. She is the Chair of Breaking Traffic Advisory Council and Secretary for the Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery, and of course, our own Police Chief Kimball, who has continued to work tirelessly in this arena. And I have a proclamation from the Office of the Mary that I enjoy giving each and every year. Thank you for your hard work, both of you. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the unalienable right to freedom and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas human trafficking is a modern-day slavery, claiming millions of victims roll by and bound in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary subterfuge, and debt bondage. And whereas this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom and fuels organized crime, exists in our nation, state, and our very own community. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolated nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, the efforts by our local community to promote the yearly observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enact one of these examples of the continuous commitment in the United States and the state of Iowa to increase awareness of and to actively eradicate human trafficking. And whereas the City of Betendorf joins Breaking Traffic, a program of family resources, in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, and comprehensive services to survivors of human trafficking. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Betendorf, by law, do hereby proclaim the month of January, twenty twenty-three, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I urge all of our citizens to join in this observance, be vigilant, and if you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at one eight eight three seven three seven eight eight eight.
Hear.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. Please, if you have some words of wisdom you'd like to share, I'll hold the proclamation for our picture there.
First of all, I really appreciate the City of Betendorf Board for passing this proclamation that declares January as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. As the founder of Breaking Traffic, which is now connected with Family Resources, as was mentioned, thank you once again for recognizing how important this issue is, as does this gentleman right here, your Chief of Police. I realize that trafficking or slavery occurring right here in the Quad Cities is indeed hard to believe, but it is right here in River City. So we need all our citizens to continue to learn about trafficking or slavery so that we can become part of the solution to this highness crime. Worldwide, an estimated fifty million people are currently victims of human trafficking. That is a ten million people increase since two thousand nineteen. In Iowa, also sex trafficking victims increased from five hundred and fifty-eight in twenty twenty to six hundred and forty-two in twenty twenty-one. Human trafficking preys on their victims by promising a life of hope and greater opportunity while delivering only enslavement. Instead of delivering people to better lives, traffickers profit from the labor and toil of their victims with a force through violence, drugs, and intimidation to work in the sex trade in hotels motels and illicit massage businesses. This proclamation was formed with the purpose of working toward abolishing all forms of human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration. We look forward to working with the Board, the Sheriff, and the many agencies and concerned local citizens of Betendorf to end trafficking in our community. It's most important that our Quad Cities be free of an element that destroys basic human rights. Like you, we want our communities to be family-friendly, in places of which we are extremely proud. I am one of those citizens who have lived in this community over sixty years. So again, I sincerely thank you for making this issue a priority through your January Slavery and Human Trafficking proclamation. So thank you.
You're welcome.
One, two, three. One more.
Do you want to say anything, Keith?
Yeah, real quick, just wanted, as a lot of you may not know, I mean, there's not a bigger supporter than Maggie over the years in this cause. It is something near and dear to her heart. We meet Breaking Traffic Embassy Coalition, it's a member of law enfor, a board of law enforcement, family resources, Maggie and other members in the community that volunteer and donate their time for education, awareness, prevention. We talk about referrals and things like that, just so we meet every, every two months to discuss these issues and look at, you know, from the political level at the state legislature as far as laws we can act to help us. And the last thing is, is these are, these are complex, difficult cases, and we did have, we had a case that originated actually quite a few years ago, but we had a successful, it started with our detective bureau, we worked with the feds and the FBI, and we will actually have a successful prosecution of a human sex trafficking case that originated out of Betendorf between here and Chicago, and that person is going to be locked up for thirty-five years. So it was a really good effort. So these efforts are definitely very important to us, so thanks again.
And I just want to mention one other thing. We are having some legislation this, this year, right now, called Safe Harbor Task Force, and what that is about, and we want to all support that, because what that is about is to get all law enforcement, social services, other people that do things for victims, so that we can have a plan statewide, which we don't have right now, and we don't want the police, these police are not doing this, but other places in Iowa, they're arresting the victim. You don't arrest a victim. They are a victim, that's what that means. But we want to pass this legislation, this is bipartisan, both Republican and Democrat, so we hope you'll support it and talk to your legislators about, let's get this through so that next year we'll have an amount of money for human trafficking programs, so that when the police, law enforcement finds some victim, they can refer them immediately so they can have something left in their life of which they can then be educated to. And that's what we need here. So I'd appreciate if you'd look at that and talk to your legislators about that, too, because this would be new legislation that we want to have through, and I can't imagine anybody being against this.
This is yours, right?
Oh, you get to take that.
Oh, do I get to take this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's for you.
And take any car you want, Maggie. All right, public requests of counsel. If there's anybody here who wants to be heard on an item that's not already on our agenda tonight for a public hearing, now is your opportunity to be heard. You can approach the podium in the back, please state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you. All right, we'll close public requests of counsel and move to our first public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this name?
No, we did not.
All right. Mark, do you want to give us a heads up? I probably should have come to you for info first, but before we open the public hearing, give us your spiel.
Sure, Your Honor. If I may address seven through ten, they're really.
Yes, please.
Very much related.
They are.
We have some updates to our building code, specifically mechanical and plumbing codes. They're on a three-year cycle, so we're going to go to the twenty twenty-one. We were at the twenty fifteen cycle, so we had a gap there. To get them updated, so much has changed. The building industry is changing so rapidly. These, the simple, you know, kind of edit and cross out and hand you the ordinance, you can easily track those changes, just didn't work. We kind of had to do a repeal and replace. Not that anything was wrong with our ordinances, it was just that the time gap and the amount of change in technology that goes into plumbing mechanical codes made it so that it was just much easier for staff to give you the new code and the old code and kind of answer questions in between if we had them. We have had some discussions offline with individual members of this council and answered some of those questions. And I would remind you, these both went through our representative boards, so Plumbing Board and Mechanical Board got to look at these beforehand and made some, some input as well. If there are detailed questions, I do have Jeremy Peterson here that can help, but for the most part, we're following what state law is, and, and we must do that. We do have some amendments. They are probably less in nature than they used to be as we lose some of that local control, and I will leave it at that.
Thanks for being here, Jeremy, and thanks, Mark. Any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to Amendment of Title Ten, Building and Development, Chapter Five, Mechanical Codes. Anybody here wish to be heard on item number seven? Okay, let's close the public hearing and move to the ordinance. Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Title Ten, Building and Development, Chapter Five, Mechanical Codes and Regulations with Amendments. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed the changes to the mechanical codes. We move to the plumbing codes. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this name?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to Title Ten, Building and Development, Chapter Six, Plumbing Codes. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, let's close that public hearing. Mr. Adamson, can you help us again, please?
Be happy to, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Title Ten, Buildings and Development, Chapter Six, Plumbing Codes and Regulations with Amendments, and move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed our changes to the plumbing codes. We move to item eleven. This is a second reading, two in a row. This one for Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Section six dash one dash three twenty-two A two, vehicles entering stop intersection by adding a stop sign intersection at, on Sixteenth Street at Brown Street. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? We had an opportunity to discuss it at committee of the whole, we had a first reading, and we'll have a third, it looks like. Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed that second reading. Speaking of which, how about Councilmember Baden help us with the second reading?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Title Eleven, Chapter Thirteen, off-street parking and loading. I move approval of the ordinance at the second reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, we have a trio of third and final readings. The first is for Councilmember Connors.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Section six dash one dash three two two, parenthetical area A, parenthetical two, vehicles entering stop intersection by adding a stop sign intersection on Heights Court Middle Road at Lincoln Road. I move approval of this ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here on a third and final reading? Okay, Michelle.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Another unanimous passage. Let's see if you can do the same, Councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Section six dash one dash one four two G, parking restrictions, emergency snow removal, cul-de-sacs by adding no parking on Orchard Drive and Ginger Creek Road after a snowfall accumulation of two inches or more. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Brown, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Betendorf City Code Section six dash one dash one four two, parking restrictions, emergency snow removal, cul-de-sacs by adding no parking during certain times for snow removal at the Fifteenth Street and Eighteenth Street public parking lots. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Nice job. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
We have approved by unanimous vote that third and final ordinance. Now we move to our consent agenda, and I would point out, before you leave, please meet Corey Satterfield, who is here. We are appointing him to the Betendorf Plan and Zoning Commission this evening. Corey, thank you. Appreciate you. Can I entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on any particular item? All right, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, we unanimously approved each and every item on our consent agenda. It's now time to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a couple, just real quick, Your Honor.
Couple motions to adjourn? We only need one.
No, no, just a couple items.
Go right ahead.
If I could indulge. First of all, I'd like to thank staff, Police Department, everybody for getting the forty mile an hour on Fifty-third. I thought, maybe it's my imagination, but I think it's really has had some effect already.
I would agree. I live up in there, and I believe it's slowing it down, yep.
And it's consistent now all the way across into Davenport, so I think I think it was a good thing. Second thing is, I went this morning down to the administration center, county administration center, and attended their swearing in. So I just wanted to congratulate Gene Dixon, John Maxwell, Ross Postion as supervisors, county supervisors, Tony Kenobi, treasurer, Rita Vargas, recorder, Kerry Tompkins, auditor, and Kelly Cunningham-Hawn as our new county attorney. So anyway, just best wishes to all of them, and I'm sure that's from everybody.
Yeah, we'll continue our working relationship with the county. I'm sure of it.
Yeah, good people.
Would you like to be the one, Councilmember Adamson, to move us to adjourn?
I wouldn't, Your Honor.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work. Thank you.